Three sec, Chair.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Emmett County Commissioner's meeting for November twentieth. And please ask your right to play the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Alfon?
Here.
Mr. Gooding?
Here.
Mr. Mates?
Here.
Mr. Geto.
Here.
Mr. Gatawski?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Coops?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda as presented for tonight. I wouldn't make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing, now all of you say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All say same sign. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is a DPW clean sweep grant on November tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. If there are no changes or additions on the consent agenda, any motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda. The items contained there are in. And authorize the county administration to sign attached items on behalf of the board of commissioners.
Second. We have a motion, second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing, now roll call, please, Susan.
Mr. Alfon?
Yes.
Mr. Gooding?
Yes.
Mr. Mates?
Yes.
Mr. Geto?
Yes.
Mr. Gatawski?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Coops?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. We have now come to the first public comment. Anyone wishing to address the commissioners, please come to the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes. Anyone else?
Good evening. Mike Kinnerman, Pleasant View Township. Just came in to voice my support for the continuation of the contract with Straits Area Transit. I think it's a valuable service that a lot of folks that would normally be here, because they require that service, they can't be with us here tonight, so I appreciate your consideration when renewing that, and I think it's a service that should be continued. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board?
Hello, I'm Martha Lancaster, West Dravers Township, and I'm also here to speak in support of renewing the grant with Straits Regional Ride. I'm sure that you all know that a lot of our neighbors are really in a lot of stress right now, financial stress, the lines at the food pantries over here from Manah is pretty remarkable, housing costs are going up, healthcare costs and health insurance are going to go up for all of us. And I think providing some minor level of transportation is something that we can really do. You've also probably heard that more and more people are moving paycheck to paycheck, and that really includes living like one car repair away from losing your job. The level of people in the Alice population, which is asset limited, income constrained, employed, is increasing as well, and those are working people who really can't afford the basic needs. I know that Straits Regional Ride isn't terribly well utilized, and that's really because the routes are fairly minimal, but it provides an important service for those people that use it, and I don't think it's a huge amount of our county budget, so I hope that you will renew it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Well, Nate Hall, Gasky, Atkins Road. I would like to see you not give the money to Straits Area Ride and give it to our Friendship Center. If you guys are going to budget the money, let's spend it locally. I know that the Straits Area Ride, from everything that I know, and the very first time that it went on, I know that there was a lot of money lost, but to spend it with a company up in Sheboygan, I think, I just think it should be spent here, and I think a lot about the Friendship Center. I think they're well needed, and that funding, why not give it to them? They have, we have the buses, and I think they do a great job, so that's it. So, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to?
May I say? We've had a push in this county for transportation quite a few times, and the citizens really don't want to have to pay for it. I would encourage you to look at other sources of funding if anything more is to be done. And I know there are a lot of people who probably wouldn't like this, but in Traverse City, they're talking about trying to get legislation passed for a hotel tax to fund infrastructure. And supporting that might be a good idea, that it could be used for bus service. It could, something that could be used to help fund excess EMS, Sheriff's Department, and other services that are exacerbated due to tourism. And, you know, I think that's one of the problems of why we need this transportation, is because those services have stressed the finances of everybody here. And so finding a way to recoup that, that doesn't go at the expense of the taxpayers, would be something to look into, and something that I would suggest you see if there's some way to support that agenda.
Your name, please?
Oh, sorry. Hannah Valton. You asked one, then you wanted to ask me?
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
May I make a second comment? I didn't use all my three minutes.
Sure.
Thanks. And I also want to laud the Friendship Center. Friendship Center Transit does a really awesome job. However, it's only for seniors and the disabled, and Straits Regional Ride does have a more flexible, flexible policy in who they're allowed to give rides to, and there's certainly a lot of people that are younger than senior age that need rides. And I am one taxpayer who is really happy to, or willing to have my taxes used for services like this. Maybe not happy, but I'm fine with it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board?
I don't believe I used all of my three minutes either. I would also say that I think the demand will increase as the baby boom generation gets yet older. I have two next door neighbors that are eighty-five years of age, and they're about one, one good eye from needing a ride. So I might be able to provide that for the next ten years, but beyond that, I might need the ride myself. So Pleasant View Road would be a consideration, I think, because of the traffic count there morning and night. Certainly, I know there's more and more folks driving from the north end of the county. I've been there for twenty-five years, and I would be willing to bet the traffic has doubled in the last ten. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board? One more time. Our first, we have a computer.
Thank you. I'm Adam Coibisso, District 14 Director for MSU Extension. With me tonight is Amanda Foster. She's our Emmett County 4-H program coordinator. So it's that time of the year where we present our annual report, and as usual, I'm not going to go through the whole report, but I did want to cover a couple highlights for you, and Amanda's going to give you a 4-H update as well. First off, in this past year, we did two hundred and fifty-three programs accessed by Emmett County residents. Keep in mind that many of those programs are multiple week long programs, so a person might go twice a week for four to six weeks, depending on which programs that they go through. We reached one thousand eight hundred ninety-four in direct programming, and then in our social media, eleven thousand six forty-one. We use social media to communicate new research, so when we publish something that might be of interest to folks in the area, we put it on there. We inform them about upcoming classes, and any kind of new scientific announcements, we put on there as well. So it's a popular way to communicate. And right now, I'm going to turn it over to Amanda, and then I'll take it back at the end to cover a couple other things.
Thank you for your time. Like he said, I'm Amanda. I have been in this position for about three years. I'm finally starting to understand the families and what needs are and what the kids want. We're trying to refocus the Emmett County 4-H program to more youth focused things. We have new committees this year, so we have a new outreach, engagement, fundraising, all this good stuff. So all the kids are running these committees now, and so I'm excited about what this new, next year is going to bring. But for last year, we had a dairy conference down at MSU that we took some youth to. Some of the highlights for that, the youth in the Spartan, Spartan Strong shirt there, he's going to MSU come this next year, and he is actually studying dairy, so that's pretty neat that he gets to see what MSU provides. His mom also went down as a volunteer, and she made those connections with the instructors and like the grants and all the stuff that prepares him for going to college and above. The gal on the right there, she's actually going to go to MSU to become a vet in the next couple of years. So that was super exciting to see those come to life, and for those kids to see this at my school down there. Exploration days, we go every year. Our numbers keep increasing, and that's kind of where they go and find out what career path they want to explore. And then we had our judging clinic that we did this year. We had a really great outcome with especially the small animals. So this year, our small animal superintendents are going to do a clinic and a little show, because there's not many small animal shows, so we're going to do something up here so that the kids in that area can participate in that. We had eighteen kids certified in babysitting training. They did CPR, first aid, so now they're prepared to babysit. We had some events with the library that we did, with the public and teaching them about backyard chickens. And then, of course, there's fair, which is always fun. That's something that we work really hard at all year long to get to, so we have lots of fun pictures in the report for that. Again, like just, we're excited about starting the new year again. Of course, we started planning it the week after fair, so yeah, I'm just excited about what this new year is going to bring and all of the improvements that are waiting. Thank you.
In the rest of the items, I'm just going to cover a couple things for you. So cert say training is pretty popular up here for anybody who works in food service, so they require cert says training, and we offer that to folks. Leadership page, you've all been to County Commissioners School either last year or in previous years, so you're familiar with that one. So planning and zoning things this year that they did, that I wanted to let you know about, the planning and zoning committee training was offered here in Emmett, and they offered some additional training that doesn't happen every year, but came up here because they were asked to do it. So there was changes to renewable energy permitting under Act of two thirty-three. That was a special training that people asked us to do so that we could update them on the rules changes. And then zoning Board of Appeals training, that doesn't happen every year either, but that was requested up here as well because just folks wanted additional training that sit on planning and zoning boards. Pesticide safety training, so this is one of the things we do every year, and I just wanted to add an update to you. So everybody that runs any kind of farm operation or many other operations, landscaping, anybody that sprays pesticides requires a license. And in order to keep that license, they either have to sit for the test or do continuing education credits. We offer those classes around the state, twenty-eight in-person locations around the state. Now, new this year, we're also offering webinars for those classes, so people can get their continuing education credits either by going through the in-person training or they can take webinar training. And some people will want to do both, depending on how many continuing education credits they need. So I just wanted to let you know that, because up here in northern Michigan, we do have a session in Gaylord every year, but if they can't make that one, they might have to drive downstate for one, so the webinars, I think, are going to be pretty popular with folks. And I'm not going to go through the rest of this, because I'll be droning on for quite a long time. But I want to stop and ask if anybody has any questions.
Questions for you?
I do have one. Do you know of any herbicide that can be put on your garden before you plant it in May that will keep the crabgrass from growing during the summer but won't harm the vegetables?
I can get that for you. We have a program called Ask Extension. Anybody can go to the website, but we'll do it for you. And it'll go to a master gardener who will provide you with that. There are some, yes, but I don't know them off the top of my head.
I call it nine of those. Just, I went in and got some soil tests from you. The information that is provided by MSU sends it's fantastic. I use it for my food plots, and I follow it to a T, and I had better success than I've ever had, so I really appreciate the work that you guys have put out.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other comment? Adam, your response on the ice storm? How bad were the sugar bushes and other crops in the area damaged?
Bad, and we did help people get some grants, but, you know, the amount of grants didn't come anywhere near the need in the area. One of the primary things that Wendy Meeland did immediately after was get some information out to the sugar bush providers, because people took such huge amount of damage. And one of the other things she did is, because she's so well connected in the state, is get that information up to the state agencies that we need some more programs for our area. And I think they would have gotten that eventually, but they got it really fast, because Wendy's up here and knows who to call, and like I think many of you experienced. I think because other things happened downstate the same time we got hit, people didn't really realize how bad things happened up here, so to the extent we could, we helped people get some funding and then awareness, and then get the word out about, for those folks that maybe didn't qualify for funding, what they could do themselves, how they could tackle the damage.
Any other questions? Thank you, Adam. Speaking of Amanda?
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is the administrative department.
Thank you. I attached our staffing report for you. You see that we have three openings as of the date of this report. NLEA, we've been working with them at the airport. They did secure some pre-development dollars and funding, and one of the areas that they're looking at is the airport. I think many years ago, we looked at the airport and is there any development potential up there? Well, this grant funding that NLEA received will give us an opportunity to get this, to look at the airport and get it to the state what we call development ready, and do a lot of the pre-work that needs to be done, so there'll be some opportunities hopefully in the future for some new development up in the Pelson around the airport. I gave you a list of the facility projects that were completed this year. I won't go through all of them that are here, but a couple of the highlights. We've been talking about the compactor at the DPW yard, and we've had some challenges with that. I'm happy to report that the compactor is in place, and they're doing some fine tuning of it, and hopefully that will be up and operating next week. And all the challenges that we faced, they worked through it all, and it's up and ready to go. There was a question last meeting about a timer, and we could find a timer, and I think Pam has secured that, and we ordered a timer for the planning commission, so that will take care of that. I put a few photos in here of the stairs that we know at the airports. For us that are up there a lot, for the airport committees that are just up there, stairs are in bad conditions. They have been resurfaced and redone. We found a contractor, and they look beautiful, so let's look back to how they were when they were first installed. The parking lots, both are complete now. The south lot, north lot, south lot's been open since, I think, early November. So that is up and ready, and our gates are working on that right now, so those will be working. So for staff, that is staff parking during the daytime, and then at nighttime, those open up and open, that lot becomes a public lot. That is my report for tonight.
Questions for the administrator? All right, thank you. Now we go to Mr. Gibson on the financial report.
All right. Well, I'm, what I'm showing you tonight is we're three fourths into the year, so we're nine months into our fiscal year. Currently, our expenditures are at sixty-four percent of budget, so we are doing really well with our expenditures. Our revenues are at eighty percent of our budget, and that mainly is because we've gotten a lot of tax revenue, because it starts coming in usually in the end of August, beginning of September. So with that being said, we're doing really well. We are in the process of finalizing the twenty-five budget, so that we'll have that for our board meeting on December eighth, and the twenty-sixth budget will also be there for that meeting. So we are really busy right now, trying to get through all these budgets, and I'm seeing lots of numbers. So is there any questions on the budget? I mean, I really feel like we're doing a really good job at tracking with the expenditures, especially at sixty-four percent. We're at normally about seventy-five. So it should be a halfway decent year.
When you say the taxes are coming in, what time period do they come in?
They start coming in about September, and then we probably get the last one, the beginning of December, and then we will get the payout in March. So, and that's usually anywhere between eight hundred and a million.
Any questions for Mr. Gibson? What's the payout? Is that the final payment?
Yeah, yes. It's, so what happens is, as you have, it's the delinquent tax. So it's the money that people haven't quite paid yet, and that needs to come back, and that's paid to that delinquent tax line.
Any other questions? Hearing done. We have no unfinished business. We have claims in committee and travel vouchers, and we need approval from the board solution.
Mr. Chair, I move for the payment of the claims, the amount of six million, six hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars and five cents. The payment of the committee of travel vouchers in the amount of three thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars and one hundred and sixty cents.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or question? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Coops?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Gatawski?
Yes.
Mr. Geto?
Yes.
Mr. Mates?
Yes.
Mr. Gooding?
Yes.
Mr. Alfon?
Yes.
Motion carries. First item in new business is the FY twenty-six Straits Regional Ride, Mr. Boyer.
This is our yearly renewal for Straits Regional Ride. We were anticipating a cost of about sixty thousand dollars based on what we've done this year. In the past number of years, I think you've seen that number was zero for many years. We looked at all the money that was coming in through ARPA, and during, excuse me, during COVID, we saw a lot of dollars coming in, so that's, we're based, the percentage is based on, between the three counties, is based on ridership. So when we, when they tally up each month, it's based on ridership, and we're going to divide that out by the three counties. What we've been able to determine is that we do approximately nine hundred rides a month through the system, and a lot of the areas that we see the biggest concentration, or obviously our biggest population is, it's Charlotte, excuse me, it's him, Gatawski at Harbor Springs, Assyria Bear Creek's biggest ridership, that's where our population is. The program continues to work. Mr. Mates sits on the board and can review that each time. It is our service. This does, as mentioned earlier, this offers rides to anyone. Friendship Center is an offer seniors and handicaps, and they get funding for that service. This is a service that we have that's open to anybody. It is somewhat restricted, just based on the size of our county, four hundred and twenty square miles. It's very difficult to run a comprehensive program with the population that we have here, but it is working today, and from what we hear, the users that are riding the system, it's very beneficial, and it's a means of transportation.
Questions?
Yes. Do we know for sure how much money we're getting this year from the state and the federal government for grant funding?
They have, they have put in, in their report, what they think that's going to be. Thirty-four percent comes from state revenue, eighteen percent comes from federal revenue. I don't know if they have that exact dollar yet. We know from the federal government, they probably don't have that exact dollar yet.
Hey, excuse me, Mr. Chair, just, despite my report here, they're getting fifty-two percent, but they've notified that their state federal funding will be fixed at fifty-two percent for twenty-two cents. Mr. Chair, just as a matter of procedure, can we get this motion on the floor? We have a discussion, that's not even a standard procedure.
We can do that.
So I will move to approve the twenty twenty-six Straits Regional Ride letter of understanding reflecting Emmett County's participation in the regional transportation program. Then authorize the board chair to sign the same.
We have a motion and a second, and we have discussion. Just to clarify, when you're saying fifty-two percent, what is that percent of? I guess that's warranted done.
They just said state and federal funding would be fixed at fifty-two percent.
There's state, federal funding that comes in for transportation, and that's the allocation, fifty-two percent of whatever that dollar amount is, and I don't have that exactly.
I guess what I'm asking is that that's fifty-two percent of the total cost?
Total cost of the operation of all transit.
So I'm reading the agreement here. It says regional transit study projected a local match of ninety-six thousand three hundred, and it's going to be kind of county share for approximately what, the Emmett counties? How do we talk about it?
I, I, based on what we have, we think it would be around sixty thousand dollars. And again, that's based on ridership, and we're projecting what that might, that's the highest number that we anticipate that it would be, based on what we're doing, about fifteen thousand a quarter rate, now fourteen to fifteen thousand a quarter.
So one thing to consider about transit is that all transit is subsidized. The airport is subsidized, the air travel is subsidized, trains are subsidized, roads are subsidized. We all pay for roads and our taxes, right? The gas we put in our cars is subsidized, so there's no transit that pays for itself. It doesn't happen. And so this is a pretty good deal for a pretty limited system that we have. And obviously, there's, there could be a system that would better meet our needs, and we might be able to do it more efficiently. But up until now, this is what we have, right? This is the system that we've been able to get. We've had it for a while. It works. At this point, if we were to pull funding or back out of this and it ended abruptly, that is a very, very cruel move. That's an act of cruelty for people that depend on it. And I don't, personally, I don't have an ability to do that, that kind of cruelty. But it could be a possibility of, we fund this thing, and in the meantime, we look into something that might actually meet our needs better. So that's another possibility, right? So you wouldn't do it, you wouldn't wait until next year. That'd be something that we start sooner. So that's a possibility. But transit is going to be subsidized, and that's what we're getting here tonight.
So that's a possibility. But transit is going to be subsidized, and that's what we're getting here tonight at the meeting, for all of us, there's a subsidy on the roads and gas, so that's what I was thinking of.
Any other comments, questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In the twenty-twenty-five budget here I've got in front of me, we had put in there thirteen thousand, nine hundred hours for straight regional ride, and as I understand it, we spent twenty-seven thousand to date, which is twice as much as we have in the budget. And the year's not over yet, and the twenty-six recommended budget, it's got sixty thousand in there, but I understand that's only for half the year, it's only through June, and I would like to say that I think that the federal government has pulled a lot of their support from this program. We should also pull our support. Let's decide how much taxpayers' money we want to contribute to busing, if any, and give it to the Friendship Center. They seem to be making our taxpayers' money go a lot further, and that would also keep it in Emmett County, as was suggested here earlier tonight. And just for the fun of it, I called a straight regional ride this morning, and asked them if they could give me a ride from the Moose Jaw Junction at Larch Lake on Monday to Potaske, and they said, and this is a direct quote, "We do not go out that way." I called the Friendship Center a few minutes later, and they said if I could wait till Monday, they could come out at nine-thirty in the morning, pick me up there at the Moose Jaw Junction, and the price would be two dollars and fifty cents each way, and they'd come back late in the afternoon.
So Mr. Loffbaum kind of makes my point that we do need a more comprehensive transit system. This does not meet our needs. It doesn't meet the needs of people in Northern Emmett County. There's a need for that. So I would propose that let's come up with a plan that works for us, that works for our county, that works for Mr. Loffbaum. Now, the Friendship Center is great, because Mr. Loffbaum is of the age that we're using, but if you're not, then what, right? Then you got nothing. And again, to just pull this thing, this rug out from underneath the people that are using, we're getting nine hundred rides a month, these are people who are using this thing. They're probably going to the food pantries and work, and the places that they need to go, appointments and whatnot, and if the Friendship Center can't service them because they don't meet the requirements, those people are going to be left with nothing. And again, that's just a level of cruelty to our citizens, our most vulnerable citizens, and it's just some kind of.
Any other comments or questions?
I would also like to say, Chairman, that I drove for straight regional ride for five months back in two thousand seventeen, in two thousand eighteen, and I could see real quickly how much money they were losing daily on each bus. It's a, it's a money pit.
It's not efficient, but we know what the cost is, and we know, and we know what the cost is, and that's what it is. It's just like all of the rest of our transit is not efficient. If it were efficient, we'd be doing it for a profit. But there's no transit that pays for itself, it doesn't exist.
The purpose, first purpose of discussion, how do we know what the cost is?
Well, we haven't, haven't budgeted, I think. Yeah, we have a, we have a budgeted dollar amount. We anticipate, based on our current rates, it will be sixty thousand dollars, based on the riderships that we're projecting.
But, but it could go up or less.
It could go up or it could be less. It just depends on ridership, and the ridership seems to be somewhat stable through the number of years, so at our best estimate, that's where we think we're going to fall, there's sixty thousand, and, and, you know, to the point that transit and the busing is subsidized, Friendship Center is subsidized, that money comes from the village and also federal and state money they receive to do senior transportation and handicapped transportation. So it, it's the system, it's all, it's all getting some type of subsidy.
I guess I have two follow-ups to that. Number, number one, you know, working on the planning commission and watching a master plan, you know, one of the two most common concerns that's brought up through the master plan is of transportation. So I think that's something we need to consider. I would just like to see the board make a commitment to find something better that is out there.
I would love to see that. I think that's the best idea for all day.
I understand. I came here fully prepared to say, let's put it to the Friendship Center. At least that's what I was thinking of. You know, at least two, three days ago, I was thinking of doing that, and then I kind of educated myself a little bit, and to see where that has its flaws also. But although I don't think it's really an act of cruelty to cut it off, you know, I do think it would be pretty corrupt for the people that are using it, but I'd like to see somehow we make a commitment tonight to do something better than what we're doing now.
Thank you.
I mean, our, our money, our concern should be with Emmett County, and I don't know, sometimes these partnerships with other counties, I kind of wonder, because we're the biggest, most populated county, how much are we subsidizing them?
They're going to be players in an efficient transit system in Emmett County. There is, it's going to be the Friendship Center, it could be private enterprise, it could be some other things that we're not thinking about. It could be tribe. There's already some transit going on here, and it's not coordinated, but we could make a better transit system than what we have. We could make something efficient. And just remember, our staff has been pretty reliable as far as budgeting over the last four years since I've been here, so I rely on their numbers, I think they're real. So the thing to do would be to fund this transit system this year, and in the meantime, let's come up with a plan that is efficient and meets our needs. That's what we really need, right?
Well, and I, I love that idea, but on the other side of that is, I can't think of too many government programs that works better than private industry.
I think, I think there's a role for the private sector in transit in Emmett County.
Because it wasn't, it wasn't just two, three, four years ago, I think, don't quote me, wasn't that far in our past, that we had taxi companies here that I feel that we're trying to compete with the subsidized transportation.
So I've heard talk of like, relying on some taxis and providing some vouchers, right? I mean, you can't ride for thirty bucks, you know, somebody who's going to go to the food pantry is not going to cough up thirty bucks for a taxi, but there's possibilities that we could, you, private enterprise could be part of our plan. Mr. Boyer, you want to add something to that? Well, I, I think a number of years ago, we had the discussion, some of you were on the, on the board, and we had the discussions, and there's a lot of opportunities out there, but whatever we do in transit is going to be, there's going to be a subsidy. People talk about the system in Grand Travers. You have a population of ninety-seven thousand there, we have thirty-four thousand, and we're spread out, so it, it's going to be a combination, it's going to have to be a combination of a lot of different than private sector, Friendship Centers, the tribe, the private sector, the casinos have shuttles, you can do wine tours. I mean, there's, there's a lot of systems out there, but it's going to have to be a combination of many things to come together to make the system really work, because we are so spread out. Just to Mr. Loffbaum, to get up north, it's a challenge. So let's pass this thing tonight and make a commitment, and have our, ask our staff if they can come up with some alternatives for us. So next year, we're not in this situation of, are we going to do it or not do it at the last minute? Let's make a plan, and let's work on it. Let's make that our goal this year, one of our goals. Makes perfect sense.
Any other comments, questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll say one more thing. When I first started driving for them, Emco was just getting started here in Potaske, we had three buses here, and there were three taxi cab companies in Potaske at the time. We put two of them out of business because we were given cheap rides, basically giving the rides away, two dollars, three dollars, and I called the taxi cab companies. They said they cannot compete with that, and two of them were out of business, and the third one was really struggling. He said he figured, this was years ago, he would need ten dollars per ride to break even, and I'm sure it's much higher now with the inflation. It's not a self-sustaining program.
It's not supposed to be a self-sustaining program. I challenge you to name one transit system, one thing that's involved with transit in our country that's not subsidized. Tell me one thing. Tell me how anybody gets anywhere without some government subsidy, it doesn't exist.
Well, I'll refer to the Pelson Airport. We don't give cheap rides, or each ride is very expensive, three, four hundred dollars to just go from Pelson to Detroit, and we don't, we don't give them a break.
The airport is subsidized.
We charge them full price. Some of them choose to go to Traverse City, or Sioux, or Platte, or Detroit to get on a plane, because the price is high there.
And air travel for people that are traveling across the country is different than people who are taking a twenty-minute ride to the doctor, because they can't afford a car. And both of those systems are subsidized. The air travel transit system is subsidized, and all, most systems are subsidized. Every one in the country. There's not one that's not. And I challenge you to name one that isn't.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, just, we did get a, I don't know if the board had a chance to look at it, but Larry Dyer, constituent of ours, he sent us an email earlier saying, there are programs in other similar-sized areas that have Uber-style vehicles instead of the big buses like Emco used to have. Could, could be an option. I don't know how that would work.
Things worth looking into.
There are options out there. He sent us three links that we could look at and see how that's working.
So let's pass the thing and find our options.
Any other comments or questions? We're going to call for one.
I think we're ready to support the, the proposal to continue on with straight regional ride as proposed. I remember those meetings, and one at the highest, you know, at the school. We heard a lot of pros and cons for supporting straight regional ride, and I think it's working well for, for what we've got. I think it would be, we, you know, we tried to look into it. Prior board commissioners have tried to look into the cost of funding it ourselves and realize how out of reach that was for a county our size. And it just makes sense to continue on. There's ways to approve it. You know, the numbers I'm hearing anyway, on the straight regional ride meetings, is this is getting pretty expensive. You know, you think our share is a lot, Chilwell County, their share for the last three months is over forty thousand dollars, and they have the majority of the ridership, that's why. So at some point, we're going to have to look at this realistically. If that's what we want to do, we want to provide a transportation system. That's something we need to start looking at, and I support the motion that's been proposed at this point.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ginnup?
Yes.
Commissioner Mapes?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatawski?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooding?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Loffbaum?
No.
Commissioner Coates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Boyer's Animal Shelter Services Bidding.
Yes, we went out to bid for animal shelters. This is for stray and injured animals that the sheriff department, the animal patrol officer deals with, and our fee submitted on the street, we did get one response, it's a three-year contract with an option of up to two, one will renew, so up to five years. Sheriff Department has embedded the system, embedded the bid out. Little Travers Bay Humane Society is just so bitter and most qualified bidder, and we just have been moving forward. You'll see the costs are all in here, and it's similar to the current operation we have, it's another vendor, and we think Humane Society is the perfect place for Australian injured animals.
Your motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. I move to approve the twenty-twenty-six to twenty-twenty-eight Little Travers Bay Humane Society proposal to provide animal shelter services in the amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars pending a suitable agreement to be determined by civil council and authorize the county administrator to sign all necessary documents on behalf of the border commissioners.
I'll say. A motion to the second. Any discussion? Any questions? Hearing, roll call.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Ginnup?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooding?
Yes.
Commissioner Loffbaum?
Yes.
Commissioner Mapes?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatawski?
Yes.
Commissioner Coates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Boyer, DTE Energy Foundation Tree Grant.
Big grant for us, two thousand forty dollars through DTE, and it was a grant offered all through the northern counties here. And we did receive the grant. The plant is a one-to-one match. Our match will be in-kind service, actually planting the trees. These are planned to go at the fairgrounds in the springtime, so the word is two thousand forty dollars.
Please move the motion to the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the DTE Energy Foundation Tree Planting Grant, two thousand forty dollars, pending a suitable agreement, a grant agreement to be determined by civil council and authorize the county administrator to sign all necessary documents.
I'll say. A motion to support. Any questions or discussion on the DTE grant? Hearing, roll call.
Commissioner Loffbaum?
Yes.
Commissioner Mapes?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatawski?
Yes.
Commissioner Coates?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Ginnup?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooding?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is the SIAIDAC Amendment Six, Building Department EMS Support Station in Bay Bluffs, Mr. Boyer.
Yes, SIAIDAC is our preferred vendor for engineering and architectural drawings, but we bring, each time that we have a new project, we bring that forward for you to approve that. So in, in this one, we have three different projects that we're working on, security improvements for the Emmett County building outfits, planning and the, planning and zoning building, generator system modification for Emmett County EMS. We're looking at a, a system at EMS, we only power at the current time a small portion of the building, as, as you know, through the disaster that we had. We had extension cords running through that, so we're looking at, at offering more service, more power in there in case of blackout. Last one is HVAC upgrades improvements for Bay Bluffs. That is funded through the Bay Bluffs account, and those are the three projects we're looking at. Provide the, the architecture, the engineering, the construction administration for the projects.
Sir, for motion?
I'll stomp through it. I move to approve Amendment Six to the existing professional services agreement with the SIAIDAC Group to provide architectural and engineering services in a month not to exceed fifty-nine thousand four hundred dollars for security improvements at the Emmett County Building Department, generator system modification at the Emmett County EMS building, and HVAC upgrades at Bay Bluffs Medical Care Facility, and authorize the county administrator to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Motion to the second. Any discussion? Any question? Roll call.
Commissioner Coates?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatawski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mapes?
Yes.
Commissioner Loffbaum?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooding?
Yes.
Commissioner Ginnup?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item is the airport assignment of hangar P-four lease, Mr. Boyer.
Yes, this is one of our hangars that's privately owned. We know those hangars, eventually we revert back to the county, so there's a remainder until, I think it's twenty-twenty-nine on this lease, so it's assigning a lease to a new person to come in. There are same responsibilities that the current leaseholder provides, and you'll see down below that they have to continue to provide their insurance, they need to maintain the front building, maintain the building. So this would be to continue that lease out until it expires in July fourteenth of twenty-twenty-nine.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve the assignment and acceptance of the lessees interested hangar lease, providing lesser consent for the Menemis Aviation LLC lease interest to be assigned to Sunkist Aviation LLC, and authorize the county administrator to sign the same.
Second.
Motion to the second. Any discussion? Question? Hearing, roll call.
Commissioner Loffbaum?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooding?
Yes.
Commissioner Mapes?
Yes.
Commissioner Ginnup?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatawski?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Coates?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is to set a public hearing for the CDVG Emergency Grant, Generator Grant Closeout.
That's exactly what we're looking for. As part of the grant that we were.
Could set a better one, sir.
We have to do a close-off public hearing, so we are looking at putting that as the December eighteenth at six p.m.
Your motion?
We're looking for a motion to.
For our public hearings.
To open it, to offer a public hearing, and we have to post that, we will post that.
So I'll move to hold a public hearing for the CDVG Emergency Generator Grant Closeout and Director County Clerk to notify the public pursuant to the Open Meetings Act that the hearing will take place on December eighteenth, twenty, twenty-five to six p.m.
Second.
Motion to the second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Coates?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatawski?
Yes.
Commissioner Ginnup?
Yes.
Commissioner Mapes?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooding?
Yes.
Commissioner Loffbaum?
Yes.
That is the end of our business portion of the agenda, except for now moving into appointments. We have the Community Corrections Advisor. We have the Community Corrections Advisor, the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to reappoint Cynthia Everly to the Community Corrections Advisor.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Lockbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooding?
Yes.
Commissioner Mapes?
Yes.
Commissioner Gettner?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatawski?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Coates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Under Communications, Mr. Boyer, do you have any?
I did not, but I think you received something. I did not receive the other transmission.
We did, and I don't have enough, does anyone have?
I do.
I did also. You want me to read it?
We can just, if you give that to me, we'll attach it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll order it too.
Mr. Good, really?
Well, I guess, still kind of rookie here, but this communications, this is also communications that we get sent to us, or... Is that true?
It was sent to us, yes.
Okay, well, I've had several... We had a planning commission meeting, or, yeah, planning commission meeting last week where we had quite a contentious situation. I've had several complaints. I think some of you have some complaints about that. I went and talked to the one party regarding this. It was a, it was a good discussion. Didn't see any, any change at heart on that. But I, somehow, I think we as a board probably should somehow address this to the planning commission or something. I just, I think we should, I think we should have some kind of discussion and movement on that. I realize that we have a reappointment of positions probably coming up, or we can vote to change some positions coming up in January, which might alleviate the problem. However, I, I think we owe it to the public that was involved to acknowledge it and do something with it. Does, does the planning commission take care of that themselves first?
I was, I was gonna maybe throw out that maybe we could look at drafting some type of letter that could come from the chair, from this chair to the planning commission itself. I, is the planning commission, is your question, will the planning commission take care of that? I, I don't know if that's, I think that's worth to send a statement. If it's...
I think administrators should draft a letter, have it on our next agenda to review, and if this board approves, I'll sign it, et cetera.
That sounds, very to me, I guess, I just think, I don't want to be looking at it...
We can't let it pass.
What's that?
We can't let it pass.
We can't let it pass. We can't put our heads in the sand. We should, we should do something that shows that we, we acknowledge it, and we're dealing with it, and move on. We don't need to make a big nuclear war out of it, or we need to...
Thank you for bringing that up, Brett.
Mr. Boyer, you and I can work on a letter.
Yes, I'm willing to do that.
Very good. Any other communications from the board members? Hearing done. It's now the end of the month. The committee reports, Mr. Lockbon.
Okay, I attended the airport committee meeting on Tuesday, October twenty-first, nine-thirty at the airport. Things are looking really good at the airport. Jet fuel is up seven percent over at twenty-four. Passenger count was up twenty-six percent. And we've now got two de-icing trucks that are up and running. And it has been mentioned already tonight, the stairs have been refurbished. They were completely worn out. They were down to bare wood. And we talked a little bit about tree removal for next year. In the other meeting I attended was the planning meeting. Brett just mentioned on November sixth here, in this room of seven. We had two items on the agenda. First two items were postponed till later. So actually, the first item we discussed was a citizen in my district, District Number One. Came by township also, center township. His name was James Good, Cos, Cos. And the county had sent him two letters saying he was not in compliance. He has been featured on local media. My wife and I saw him on TV here about two months ago being interviewed. I don't remember if it was Channel Seven or Nine, but they were interviewing him. He's got two million lights or more, actually. He's putting them up every day. Pleasantview Road, just north of me, and the county had sent him two letters saying he was not in compliance. And the county does have two exemptions in the code. One is for farms, and the other one is for holiday lights. And he actually qualified for both. So I kind of felt that he was being, uh, kind of going after it a little bit. I even recommended we return his five hundred fifty dollars he had to put in for that permit. But the special use permit was granted to him, and one of my concerns was that, I think this got into the motion. Brett might know for sure, but some of these motions kind of get made on the, on the fly, so to speak. They go on and on for five, six hundred words. Sometimes it'll take up three quarters of a page. But I think they wanted him to put up no parking signs on Pleasantview Road to alleviate traffic, what they perceived to be a traffic hazard. I didn't think there really was one. When people go through there at night and see almost lights, they slow right now to fifteen, twenty miles an hour. And, but that did pass. And then the second item was Brian and Holly Welcome for a special use permit in site plan review. Contractors use on Rustic Road, Section Thirty-Six, Fair Creek Township. And I was the only one to vote to approve that, and that was denied by the rest of the board. And I will say one thing here about the master plan engagement committee. I've had several people call me and, and complain about this so-called engagement committee that's stacked with liberals, and they have a preconceived agenda, and then agenda is low-income housing. I think that also that this engagement committee with the five-year plan for Emmett County should promote business, all business. That's legal in Emmett County, I think should be promoted. But so far, there's nothing there about promoting business. And I, I think it would help a lot in the planning meetings when this timer comes in. Also, I suggested this to the vice chairman. He had the problem that night. He allowed people in the back of a room to stand up and speak. I don't think it was clear to them that they only had three minutes. I think they assumed they, three minutes were not up. I think it would help a lot to have them come to the podium and speak on the record, and see the timer, where it's at, and you can hear the bell go off. I think that's gonna help a lot. And that is my report for tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Gooding?
So my, Chuck took care of the planning commission pretty well. I attended the ZBA meeting this week. We had two public hearings, hearings on some variances. Both of them were basically side yard setbacks. Both of them were approved. The first one was in the critical human areas, and the person was trying to build some walkways between two new decks that was built. And the issue really was the height of the railing and the deck according, you know, within the setback. After quite a bit of deliberation, that, that was approved and that was taken care of. The second one was basically, it started out to be a side, side yard setback down in Jones, Jones Landing. We have a small house that has had some flooding in the past. There was also handicap accessibility that needed to be addressed. We had a pretty good public hearing and deliberation on that. We ended up approving that with conditions. We worked with the builder to move the house, just to pivot the house so it can meet the side, side seven halves and still have higher safety. We did have a public comment during the ZBA that was, started out wanting to know the definition of a mini storage warehouses as opposed to the bigger industrial housing, or warehouses, and how that would really affect the different zonies. You know, the larger ones, two stories, and many businesses are in the more of an industrial than into a commercial. But we had a person come in and question that and really got the ZBA and myself as a planning commi-, or as a planning commission and county commissioner that that might be something to be addressed, but I'm sure that that'll be brought up somewhere. Other than that, that, oh, we did have a request from one of the, it was one of the ZBA members that we get a new plot. We're back there. I don't know what the problem with that one is, but they've asked us to see if we can get a new plot. So that's my report.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, October seventeenth, I attended the road commission meeting, which is rather short. It's been that way lately. The board extended engineer contract for another three years. In the engineer report, two new people were hired and they're still looking for more people in preparation for upcoming retirements. The road commission was asked to take over responsibility for snowplowing for the Habitat for Humanity Development of Lansing, but Phase One was the only phase meeting the requirements of the road commission at that time. More work is needed on Phase Two to meet those requirements. That next meeting is, was October thirty-first. Straits Region Ride, October twenty-second, was a short meeting. The financials are not looking good this month. They have notified that their state federal fund will be fixed at fifty-two percent for twenty twenty-six, and that's the good part. The rest will need to be made up by ridership, supporting counties and fundraisers. This being the end of their fiscal year, the passenger counts have slid over last year. Emmett County ridership was down for the fiscal year by four hundred rides compared to last year. Two revenue sources were lost this quarter, resulting in higher costs for the three counties. Their share this quarter being eighteen thousand four hundred dollars roughly. Next meeting will be January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six. Bay Bluffs will be met on the twenty-third of October at eight a.m., and actually, we met again today at eight a.m. Everything looks good for the month of September. Financials are looking good, staffing is good, but all the two C and the nurses are needed for the night shift. The occupancy rate is currently set at eighty-three percent, and they're reporting a cash balance currently of three point five million dollars. They approved the budget for twenty twenty-six, noting that the daily rate was reduced by Medicaid by thirty dollars a day based on occupancy issues from twenty-three and twenty-four reporting. So the new budget is based on a rate less than twenty twenty-five. Medicaid is also auditing the twenty twenty-three budget. They also approved the contract, a sound physician group for the medical director's services, that meeting adjourned at ten a.m. Uh, let's see. This always planned meeting for the third was canceled. Board of Health met on the fourth of November. I reviewed staff reports. Ms. Shannon speaking to us regarding her participation in the state of community events in our four county area. She feels it's important to be involved and aware of the issues that our communities face. She attended four this year and expects to make as many possible next year. She also let us know that this chief financial officer position was filled. We approved the, the bill on employee expenses for the month, and we just removed some changes in the personnel policy and set a date for a public hearing regarding the new safety code. That will be December second at ten thirty a.m. during our next board meeting. That meeting adjourned at ten forty-five p.m., and then DPW was unable to attend that on the sixth of November, and the road commission was also unable to attend that on the fourteenth.
Commissioner Gettner?
So I was unable to attend the meeting yesterday. I was out of town, and that's my report.
My report, Parks and Rec, I was unable to attend November fourth meeting. I was unable to attend the DPW meeting on the sixth. Just adding to Chuck's report on the airport, airline jet fuel sales for the month of September compared to last September were up one hundred forty-one percent. So that, that is pretty good, mainly because they got the United flights, and the last flight for United was September twenty-eighth, and they're looking at continuing the summer flights for next year. Passenger count for the year is up twenty-two percent from September versus the September of last year. And the last thing I wanted to add to the airport information was AECOM, our, our engineering firm up there, scheduled P-five strailing in around the airport from the Elson area. Fairground meeting, November thirteenth, I was unable to attend that one as well. Northern Michigan Counties Association was held October twentieth. I attended via Zoom. The MAC Governmental Affairs Specialist, James Johnson, gave an update on the twenty twenty-six State of Michigan budget. Revenue sharing was maintained from twenty twenty-five levels, which they consider a victory since they were proposing a fifteen percent cut. They were negotiating that at least have a flat for twenty twenty-five, and that comes, so part of that comes to us. An additional eleven million dollars was approved for criminal justice departments in, in all the counties. Another seventeen million was provided to fifteen counties with the highest crime rate for prosecuting offices. The new transportation funding package, shovel pride, provided additional thirty-six percent overall increase, overall increase to county road departments. And all taxes paid at the pump will now be used for roads, including the sales tax. There is a bill ready to go that would restore veteran services funding after Auditor General Report has been completed. Mary Riley, governmental policy on land use, running MSU Extension, provided an update on Public Act Two Thirty-Three, which we heard from Adam this evening, regarding the renewable energy program, which makes it easier for the, for the public ser-, Public Services Commission to do utility scale renewable projects and take it out of the hands of locals. Public Act Two Thirty-Five requires new electricity to be fifty percent renewable by twenty thirty and sixty percent by twenty thirty-five. Public Act Two Thirty makes it difficult for local governments to fight solar panel installations. Public Act Sixty-Eight of two twenty twenty-four prevents homeowners associations from preventing solar panel installations. Production costs of large solar installations went from three hundred ninety-four dollars per megawatt in twenty-nine, two thousand and nine, down to forty-one dollars per megawatt in two thousand twenty-five. So the costs has come down very significantly, which is now less than, less expensive than natural gas and nuclear. So far, there have been three applications under Public Act Two Thirty-Three for large-scale solar installations. None have been approved yet. But the minimum size of those industrial-sized plots are a hundred acres. That's the minimum size. All of those three applications are downstate. MAC Transportation Committee, I attended via Zoom on October twenty-fourth. We heard from Ed Moyle and Tom Steinbus from County Road Association regarding the new transportation funding package. Road agencies are expected to see, I had mentioned earlier, thirty-six percent increase in twenty twenty-six, which is a total increase of one billion dollars to counties and cities. And it'll increase to one point three billion in twenty twenty-seven, and will increase another hard eight billion dollars per year until twenty thirty. Road usage pilot is, was in the bill that would have, will have self-charging hybrids paid by the mile. A new neighborhood road fund was created with the new bill, Public Act Sixteen of twenty twenty-five, that dedicates the corporate income tax, which is six hundred eighty-eight million, and twenty-four percent marijuana tax to the fund, which is expected to generate one point one billion dollars for local roads, which includes cities and counties, and would be split sixty-five percent to the counties and thirty-five percent to the cities. Of those funds, a hundred million per year will be dedicated to local bridges over the next five years. No match will be required for the Neighborhood Road Fund for local road improvements. Currently, the Michigan Transportation Fund requires a, requires a fifty percent match. Samantha Gibson from MAC Governmental Affairs Specialist loves to do the county running sharing fund was restored, and I mentioned it earlier. Also, myself, Dave Boyer, Dave White, attended the tribe's ribbon-cutting ceremony at the new apartment complex off of years of opening thirty-one on October thirty at noon.
Yeah, thank you. So just before I give my report, just want to reiterate, we did hear a consensus commitment, I thought, that we might revisit the transit situation and see what we could come up with for possible improvements for next year. Is that, did we hear that? We did, didn't we?
I appreciate you bringing that up.
Okay.
Because it's under assumption, and you know what happens when you assume, so let's, let's take it a little bit further than just assuming.
Okay, so, but I thought we did hear that we were gonna look at this, the issue, and possibly come up with a different recommendation from what we're doing this year. Did anybody else hear that?
I heard you and I say it.
Okay.
Which doesn't mean much.
That's true. Fair enough.
Anyone else have comments? Anyone else have anything? Can we have the administration looking at that or?
That's kind of what I was thinking.
You certainly can, they, we need some clear direction on what we're looking at and what we want and, and maybe sharing, you want to set up a small subcommittee with you members in? Or, or give us some clear direction either, either way.
We'd like to sort of on a three-man, two-person subcommittee. Obviously you and Brett.
Now, you're, now you're already on the streets and you know a lot about that, would you be willing to serve on that subcommittee?
Yeah, over, over the winter time, I would, I would mind.
Yeah, okay.
I don't need one more committee.
Yeah, I don't-
Commissioner Gooding, would you serve?
Yes.
All right, any three's enough.
Thank you, appreciate that. So my report, we do have a, did have a Board of Health meeting on November 4th. Don covered that in more detail than I had planned to, so I'm not going to comment more on that. The Emmett County Corrections Advisory Board met November 6th. The board approved the 2025 third and fourth quarter reports and the 2026 grant proposal. The Historical Committee met November 12th. The Historical Commission is in the process of revitalization with several new members and new ideas. After in-depth discussion of our role in the community and potential projects, members agreed to follow up on some ideas and proposals for new projects from the committee before the next quarter of the meeting. The Emmett County Opioid Settlement Steering Committee met November 12th and approved funding for several proposals from local organizations, including the Community Recovery Alliance, the CRA Partnership of McLaren, the 57th Emmett County Recovery Program Recovery Notes, the Health Department of Northwest Michigan, Safe and Northern Michigan, and M&amp;M Technology. The total amount approved was over $83,000. The Local Revenue Sharing Board met November 18th. We approved distributions to public safety organizations, including Resort Bear Creek Fire Department, Emmett County Sane Deputy, Sheriff Gaming Deputy, and Administrative Caucus. The City of Toshki, the total amount of $59,390.75. The payment and due tax, and due of taxes was also approved in the amount of $140,950.85. And EMS was reimbursed in the amount of $6,183 for casino rooms.
Thank you very much.
Can I just make one comment on the opiate funding? That will come back before the board, either at the 8th or the 18th meeting for your approval.
Thank you. My report's going to start out. Mrs. Gibson is nice enough to give the fair reports, and I have her listening, so before I start, I'll let you do your report.
All right, so on November 13th, we met the fair board. And what happened is we approved the following entertainment. So we are going to go with TK Pro Rodeo, and they are out of Oklahoma, and they will be here on Thursday, August 27th. So that'll be something new, and if you're interested, you can always go out to their website. And these are actual, true cowboys. So I think it'll be a really fun thing and something new for people. We also approved the monster trucks for Friday night, August 28th, so it'll be a one-night monster truck. Of course, the concert will be on Wednesday, and that is going to be Travis Tritt. And then we also, so you know we have a firefighter show that we, it's free entertainment. That is not going to happen this next year. He has, Neil has decided to retire, and he is not going to travel this far north anymore. So we have found a replacement, and it's called the Barnyard Adventure Show. So, and it's a great show for kids, and I think the kids will love it. It'll be something fun for them, something different, because we've had the firefighter for probably 15 or 20 years. So this will be a, a nice new entertainment for the kids. And then we have also, we're bringing back steel and wood on Tuesday, August 25th, that's backstage entertainment. There was a discussion on increasing our social media presence, especially with all the new venues, the new events that we're planning. So we want to increase that. We took a look at the bylaws, which we know right now is a little council reviewing, and those will come back to us soon. We discussed the assistant fair manager position. So now that Becky is part of the fair book, or the fair, she will no longer be able to be the board president. So there will be a new group coming in, we will have those in January, we'll have a new set of officers. Thank you, lost it. We discussed the electrical upgrade, which it sounds like right now we have all of the information from SIDA. So that will start sometime next year, and that will be done before fair. There were some, some comments on, they want to change the steer age in open class beef and dairy cattle. Because right now, our fair book says one thing, and 4-H and MSU have a different age group, so they're going to consolidate that and make that so it's the same age. Let's see what else. We discussed having some subcommittees, so that we'll have like a sponsorship advertising, entertainment, just to help so that when we come to our board meetings, we're not discussing all this at the board level and just coming back with the information. We're also looking at getting 4-H kids to help with setup and cleanup for different events at the fair. And then tickets for the concert will go on sale Saturday, December 13th. There will be a few of us at the EMS Epler Center, Epler, EMS Epler Station, sorry. And we will be, there will be probably 10 of us there. We will take phone calls for people that can't get through online or if they have questions, just to kind of help with that process. The dates of the fair for next year are August 25th through August 30th. So get those on your calendar, and that's pretty much all we discussed.
You're saying December 13th?
December 13th. Well, here's what happened, it wasn't supposed to be advertised that who the center was. And because we had a, the last board meeting, the news review picked it up. And everybody's phones were blowing up saying, oh my God, is it true? So we've had a really good response, and I think it will be a very good show.
Professor Toshki, you had a left hand?
Parks Recreation, I need me, go to the meeting on the 4th, the director gave a report on a very successful season in all of them. Crooked Lake, Crooked River locks are now closed for the season, they saw 7,817 vessels, 33,090 passengers. This is down 14,000, 1,433 vessels from last year. Camp Pensiga had two very successful Halloween weekends. After delay caused by the ice storm, some more turf pads, though pro turf pads were installed for the disc golf course. The Headlands Visitor and Gift Shop are closed. A vehicle count was conducted over the year, and 30,385 vehicles were recorded entering Headlands for 2025. We asked that number three times, and that's the one that came back with, can't believe it. McGowan Lighthouse is closed for the season. The CCE Board met yesterday, and the following items were discussed and approved. There's been much discussion about the CCE towers, both current and proposed, as well as leases on the towers from the cell companies. Mr. Gettup suggested that it be a subcommittee, and I agreed with him, so as chairman, I appointed a CCE Board, a subcommittee of towers, a committee who will work with the CCE Director regarding tower issues before they are all brought to the full board. And Mr. Gettup, he never suggests something about me put on the board, so I appointed Mr. Gettup to the board as the Emmett County representative to the committee. The first item for approval at the meeting was the 2026 budget. After many comments and long discussion, it was approved on a 5-3 vote. The second item was approval to move a million dollars into, that we have on our checking account, into an Edward Jones investment account this past. After many years of discussion with the Little Trevor Band, the Band of Ottawa Indians, an agreement was approved for 911 to do their dispatching that had cost $150,000. In the past, 911 hadn't been doing the dispatching, but no fee was being paid for that service. North Country Community Mental Health Board met on the 16th of October and held a presentation on the jail diversion program that are in various stages of development for each of the counties that North Country serves. The MAC Finance and General Governments Committee met on the 7th. I attended, as do many committee members, on Zoom as the meetings are held on Wednesday. The presentation on rank choice voting ballot initiative was presented by three county election officials, who presented the Michigan Associate County Clerk position on the ballot initiative, which they opposed. I've asked our clerk, since she has the total understanding of this ballot, if in the future she will give a presentation to this board on what rank choice voting initiative is. We also received a legislative update from Dean of Ozwords, when farmers' legislature was just getting back to work and that there was no real information applied. NLEA Board met today, Northern Lakes Economic Alliance, who's presented the year-end financial report. We showed the year closing out with a healthy fund balance. The original budget, which was slated to, was, was proposed to have a negative balance, so this is a good answer. The results of an economic pulse survey was presented. This survey is completed twice a year. By the NLEA engages both the public and private sector feelings of the local economy. The private sector is 56% feels that the local economy is good, or getting better to do business in. As is well-known, housing and staffing are the two biggest barriers to expansion and continued growth of many of the businesses in our area. At the state level, in the new state budget, economic development took a big hit and reduced funding. So the NLEA Director is working on other alternatives, and they're being researched, and that is my report. We're now to the second public comment for the board. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward, you have three minutes.
Hi, Todd Baldwin. I was at the planning commission that was talked about, and I did do a video of that, that all of you can see that on YouTube, that I'm in Emmett. If you want to look at videos at any time, any of them will be there for you to review. And I would just like to thank Mr. Lofbaum for, because he did in the meeting address the issue and, and did attempt to take care of the situation, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Our announcement is the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held December 8th, 2025 at 6:00 PM, here in the Board of Commissioners room. Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn the second, will you say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.